Hello, I'm Jan Hohm from the Rattlesnake. And I want to say how much I appreciated reading especially pages 28 to 34 about fire wising and how homeowners can make their structures defensible with defensible space. My request is that somehow using the information on pages 28 to 34, this document receives some real muscle in the form of funding and personnel. There are intangibles that you couldn't write into a document for how a community applies these principles. We need a major campaign in Missoula to create a fire-adapted community, something like what Bend, Oregon has done through their toolkit. One of the things that happened on the 5th of May this year was that Garden City Compost received yard debris as part of a fire-free day. And that small move could give us a measure of how much each year people clean the debris from their yards and around their property and bring it in. In Bend, Oregon, they're getting something like 26 million tons over a certain period of time. So if we had a measurable system for seeing improvements in how we're doing as a community. But the big thing I'm requesting is that we put some real money and muscle into getting this information out. All that the city rural and, no, the rural fire department and city fire department has done to try to get people to do assessments around their homes is too little. What we did was too little. We need to create an atmosphere where making our homes fire safe is the norm and we influence the people around us to do the same. Thank you so much for this article, I mean for your document, and especially for including so much on the fire-wise issue.
I'm Jane Darnell. I'm a deputy regional forester for the northern region of the Forest Service. And I really want to thank you and your staff for your commitment to this work. This is a revision to ongoing work. Your leadership in convening partners, diverse interests, and citizens to engage in this is significant. None of us can do this work alone. It's not easy. The implementation is critical to all of us. And you've served as such an inspirational convening group beyond this community and this county. We look at this work as an excellent example as we work with communities across the northern region, northern Idaho, North Dakota, parts of South Dakota. So I just wanted to share that deep gratitude from the National Forest Service, working with our local leaders like Jen, with our state partners like the DNRC. And I also want to thank you as a citizen. I'm proud to have been a small part of this in that role as well as representing the agency. Thanks to everybody who was involved in this.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Last chance for public comment. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions from the commission?
Yes. Adrian, Rich Lane talked about a couple additional chapters, sections, something, grass fires and wildfire habitat enhancement. Do you have any ideas for that or is that something that we can add to it later or is it, do you feel it's addressed somewhere else?
Thank you. As far as having like a range land kind of fire management component of the CWPP, no, that does not currently exist, though I think that Mr. Lane's comments do bear probably some attention in a future update is that we do have a significant amount of agricultural ground in Missoula County that currently is factored into the risk assessment that you see in the plan, but it probably does deserve a little bit more attention in a Yeah, as far as adding a section for wildlife habitat enhancements that are directly related to mitigation, is that an accurate summary? I think that it is addressed, but again, it's an area that probably does bear additional consideration in a future update.
Well, I'll just say a big thank you to everyone who's been involved over the, over more than a year of this process of updating the CWPP. I've been involved in a number of the working group discussions, and I think we have a solid document here that we're contemplating adopting today. We live in a fire environment, and if there is ever a place in the northern hemisphere, northern Rockies, North America, that can think creatively about figuring out how to live with fire, it really ought to be Missoula, Montana with the resources we have here, with the history we have here in natural resource management. We've heard a number of folks talk about implementation, and I could not agree more. I'm delighted that we will be bringing on an additional staff person to implement this plan and to address the cohesive strategy and how we might move that forward in Missoula County. People sometimes wonder what Missoula County does. Sometimes we seem to fly under the radar at times, but I'm glad that folks recognize that this is a clear role that we could play in coordinating fire and our response to fire and our response to coordinating agencies who respond to fire in Missoula County. So I really can't say enough thank yous to everyone who has worked diligently on this, and I look forward to making sure that this plan does not just gather dust on the shelf, but actually does be, is implemented and is a living document. Finally, I will say I'm glad to see we have several representatives from our congressional delegation here because we absolutely look forward to collaborating with you all in making sure that we have the resources here in Missoula County to help implement this plan, which ultimately will benefit all residents.
Well said, and thanks for all your work on it and staffs and all the agencies involved. It's really been a great collaborative effort. And I would move to approve the adoption of the Community Welfare Protection Plan as amended.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye. It passes. Thanks, everyone who came out for that item. You're free to leave or you can stay around for more fun and excitement. Testing, one, two, three. Does that work back there?
Yeah.
Testing, one, two, three.
Testing.
Test, test us. Hello? Does that work?
Testing, one, two, three.
Test, test, good.
Better late than never. Okay, our next item, and I believe we have a staff report from Casey Drayton. I will open a public hearing on Alpine Trail subdivision phase one and two final plat.
Casey Drayton, planner with Community. The project history, this subdivision received preliminary plat approval on September 14th, 2017, in front of the commissioners. This was a four-phase subdivision with two mixed uses and 28 residential lots, subject to 29 conditions of approval, I think it was. Phase one and two are what we're here for today. Those are outlined on the screen, phase one in the orange, phase two in the blue color. Just to give a brief update on where we're at in this process, in case anyone is a little confused, this is kind of a newer process for phase developments. After receiving preliminary plat approval, as I mentioned, the subdivision's required to come to a public hearing. That is only applicable to phase developments. This is a four-phase development. After the hearing today, it would then, final plat submittal would be submitted to Missoula County. After that, the final plat would then be filed. So we're still, we still haven't seen a final plat yet for this, but we're in the process of getting there. That's the purpose of this hearing here today. The public hearing for phase developments, prior to commencement of each phase, the governing body shall determine whether there are any change, primary criteria impacts or new information that exists that creates new potentially significant adverse impacts for the phase or phases. This comes out of 763-617.4 MCA. So we're really looking to see if there's anything new that's come up since the final, or the preliminary plat was approved last September, if there's any new information or anything else that would change any primary criteria. The commissioners can adopt additional conditions for the subdivision to address those changes if they feel that there are any. The commission is required to make findings within 20 days. Monday's update meeting, it was mentioned that it was 30, it's actually worded as 20 in there. So staff has put together staff analysis, which does go through the primary criteria for a subdivision and does make some findings. Staff did note a few findings on a couple of the items. Some of the ones that we found that there may be some information relating to, however it didn't change anything, was the fact that legal access is being perfected. That had to do with condition number eight, so that was discussed during the preliminary plat approval for the subdivision. The sewer district approved passage of levies for special assessments to begin construction of sewer facilities since the preliminary plat approval. However, the subdivision is outside of the boundaries of that district. The Rice Ridge Fire was an active incident, burning during the preliminary plat approval, so it was considered at that point in time. We don't feel that there's been any changed effects to the natural environment, wildlife or wildlife habitat. The same with public health and safety. There was a exemption application affidavit that was received at the CAPS office and preliminarily approved for a relocation of common boundaries associated with the subdivision that also related to a condition of approval, so that was known information at the time of preliminary plat approval that that boundary line relocation needed to happen. It's been approved, it just needs to be recorded. I believe they plan to do that on the final plat. No other information has been brought to our attention that would have changed since September, and with that, staff is recommending that there are no change primary criteria impacts and no new information exists that creates new potentially significant adverse impacts for Alpine Trails Phase One and Phase Two. I know that wording comes off a little strange, but the subdivision's not really being approved or denied here. We're really just determining whether or not there's new information out there, so it'd be a motion that there are no change primary criteria impacts. We felt that would be the best approach here if that's the, if you choose to follow the staff recommendation here today. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Would applicants representative like to address us?
Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, Dale McCormick with PCI, representing Cocko River Partners regarding the Alpine Trail subdivision. Want to thank Casey for his timely review of our intent to record the final plat of phases one and two. And we concur with staff's analysis and recommendation. Would ask for your support of staff's recommendation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Why don't you stay right there, Dale? Public comment? Oh, okay, Dale, we'll get you back up here in a second. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Lowe. I live next door to the proposed Alpine Plats. I have on my paper, I'd like to know, maybe someone can answer it here, why all of a sudden my private road that I own is now a county road?
It was always a county road.
No, it hasn't been. I've been fighting with Missoula County for four years to grade that road in the winter time for snow removal, and I've been told it's a private road. I pay property taxes on it. They refuse to do it. It's my responsibility. But on this paperwork, all of a sudden, a private road and everything became a county road.
So would, Casey, would, do you have any clarification or Dale? I don't have.
Which road are we referencing?
SOS Road.
I can look back at the initial findings here to see what was.
So there's a difference between a maintained road, there can be a county road that aren't maintained.
Now, my property is 1.19 acres. The road from where I live, SOS, at the end, all the way to Morel Creek, I own that property. I have 54 feet from Morel Creek from the front, then it goes 60 feet from my property over to the church.
Right, and counties, the county very seldom owns the road. We just have an easement over your property.
Yeah, I just have an easement and everything. I just can't figure out why all of a sudden I'm a county road if I can't get the county to grade the road and I have to do it myself.
I think what Commissioner Curtis was mentioning is that we have lots of county roads across Missoula County that are in a non-maintained status.
We don't grade them, don't plow.
So I guess I would need to learn more about just the status of your road if you wanted to leave your contact information with us. We can get back, we can look into it and get back to you.
Okay, and my next question is, being that this is going to be a homeowners association and everything, and Mr. Weatherall wants to use SOS Road from Alpine Meadows, when he's going to have two other access points, who's going to remove the snow there? Is he going to expect the property owners, because there's three other property owners there besides myself? Are we supposed to maintain our road for his HOA to be able to use the road to go through, or is he going to maintain that road?
I believe that his, the HOA is planning to maintain the road, and you're not part of the HOA, so you wouldn't be assessed for it.
So I'm getting a head nod from Mr. McCormick that the HOA will maintain the road.
Okay, now my next question is, on this paper, it says, "A second access point will be off Morel Creek Road, including the extension of SOS Road to become Wilderness Ridge Road to the south." Is my road, SOS Road, going to be changed to Wilderness Road, Wilderness Ridge Road now?
Dale, do you have any, or Casey?
I was just going to add a little bit of background from the original subdivision hearing back in September. It looked like Stephen Lowe, a resident and owner of property off SOS Road, commented that the use of SOS Road is unacceptable and access should be directed to Cedar Lane. He voiced concern about additional traffic and noise. So this was considered at the time of preliminary plat hearing, so I'm not sure today's the appropriate time, considering we're not, it sounds like getting new information here, and it looks like it was addressed that with the sale of tract three of Carr and Seeley Lake tracks number one in 2006, the warranty deed reserved a non-exclusive private access easement for tract one. The proposed subdivision is an amended plat that includes this tract. It's based on a relocated boundaries, that the reduced size of tract one now is now known as tract A in this case, which is part of the subdivision. So it sounds like they do have access through SOS Road. A portion of it is public and a portion of it is private from what I'm reading here in the original findings from last September.
I think she's just asking for some clarification. She's not trying to change our decision, but the, can, do you have in the information there whether SOS Road's name's going to be changed or does it, is it SOS and then it becomes?
Dale, do you know right offhand?
Dale, could you come up to the microphone so we can get you on the mic?
So Dale McCormick, for the record. So for clarification, as Casey is revisiting, this was dealt with very early on in the subdivision process, and there is a private access easement that goes from Morel Creek Road to the property. And as far as the name of it, I believe it would stay SOS, but that's going to be, when we get to the addressing and GIS, basically at the boundary, it would become Wilderness Emergency services may, you know, decide it makes more sense to change the name for that portion of SOS, but I'm not aware of that at this time.
So Dale, could you clarify then, is the, are you saying that there's just a private access easement that they obtained, it's not a county road?
It is not a county road. Well, I take that back, there is a small portion between SOS and Morel Creek that is a county road, and then the rest of it is a private access easement.
Okay.
Benefit of all the lots on that road as well as the property that is the parent parcel for the Alpine Trail subdivision.
So is it going to be located off of Lorraine's property, the access easement? Or is it going to go across her property?
It's, it's in place.
I know, but does it lay on her property or not?
Yes.
Okay.
It was an old easement that was there, and you're now using it?
It's an L-shaped lot. The long part of the L being where the easement lays on top of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all, you know, that's what I wanted to know.
Sure.
I look at it this way, if it's my road, I should be able to decide what I want to name it, not that someone else is going to name a road for me. You know, so, but that was, that, those were my questions and, you know, maybe we could find out more if there's another meeting or, you know, something.
Here you go.
Technical difficulties. Okay, if you could leave your contact information with us, and if there's any specific additional questions that we did not answer today, either get back to us or leave those with Sarah and we'll make sure we respond.
Okay, one more question.
Yep.
Right now, it's a one-lane road. Are we going to tear up my property in the front to make it a two-lane road?
I am not, Casey, what is the specifications for it?
There's easements on the eastern side. That's where the water is and stuff, so, you know, naturally with the property, you give up, you know, easement rights for utilities and stuff. But it's just a one-lane road, you know? In order for them to extend it, that means that I'm going to lose half of my property in the front, which means I'm going to have a road right along my fence, and I have dogs. I don't want to listen to my dogs bark all day, or somebody get mad and throw something, you know, because the dogs are barking, you know, as they're chasing the cars.
Sure. Or Dale, do you know, is there any intent to make this a two-lane road that would require expansion of it?
So right now, a portion of it is paved. That portion would remain paved, and I think it was in excess of 20 feet. I believe it was 24 feet. I have to look back for the paved portion. And then per the subdivision approval and what we proposed, the portion that is unpaved would be improved to 24 feet, which would be two 12-foot traffic lanes.
Oh, it is two-lane?
So it is, in my opinion, it is currently a two-lane road, and it would be improved to make sure that it satisfies public works to be a two-lane road for its entire length.
So it will be 24 feet wide?
... and everything. I think it kind of sucks and everything, you don't have to go through it. I have a walking trail that's going to be on the south side of my fence, you know, all the way down, and, you know, now all of a sudden I'm going to lose property that's in the front and everything to accommodate someone else. You know, so those are my questions, but I will leave you my information.
Okay.
When you guys find out more, you know, then you can let me know.
Okay.
But I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
And I'm sure Dale will convey to the owners that there are some concerns there with impositions on her property.
Okay, thank you. Is there additional public comment? Sure. Commissioner Curtis?
So it seems like, for one thing, the staff report has the wrong date. It should say the 17th, it says 18th, or 2018 that we approved this, right? On the front page, last paragraph. It says, "This composed of, and on September 14th, 2018, we approved it," so it should say 17?
That is correct, yeah.
And then the other is, is the reason this, I mean, it seems ridiculous that it's coming to us this soon after we approved it. Is this because they're going to file the plat earlier than the date that's on the paperwork?
It's likely this would give them the green light to file the final plat for phase one and phase two, which they're planning to show both on the same plat, the last I heard, so both phases will come in together concurrently, and I believe that'll be done probably in fairly short order. It sounds like they're working on it.
But what I'm asking is why, since they haven't even reached their deadline, I think it's the law change that added this silliness to it, but it's ridiculous, and I think we should work to change it, because it's silly to go through the whole process and nine months later be sitting here with this in front of us again when nothing changed.
Dale?
If I could comment on that, we had a project that had to go through the same process with the city of Missoula, and I think there's a consensus in the city and the county that for projects that the plat is being recorded within the three years or two years or whatever the initial phasing is, it only adds time and cost to the project, and it doesn't seem necessary. So if there are any attempts to provide legislative change, that would be, I think, a positive thing.
Thank you. Additional questions or public comment? Okay, Casey, then I'll close the public hearing. Additional questions or discussion from the commission? Well, I'll.
Decide what the motion should be.
Well, and before you make the motion, I'll just jump in and say, as should be no surprise, I had some significant misgivings when this came before us last September of 2017, and took some exception with findings of fact in the staff report. I would have posed the question to Adrian Beck today, if she was here, whether anything in the CWPP might have constituted new information to take into account here. My guess is probably not, and that's some of the same concerns I have today were concerns that were broached back in September, and it does appear that our consideration before us today is pretty narrowly focused on. Okay, well, anyway, I was saying that what's before us today is pretty narrowly focused on what's lined out in the phase development section of Montana Code Annotated, and as near as I can tell, there are no new condition, or new information that would trigger additional conditions today.
So our action is just to, to say there's no primary changes?
Essentially, yes, and then we're making findings to that effect, so you'll have an approval letter with those findings in the staff analysis that'll reaffirm that motion.
So I would move that the Board of County Commissioners agree with the staff's report that there are no change primary criteria impacts, no new information exists to create new potentially significant adverse impacts for subdivision, for Alpine Trail subdivision Phase One and Phase Two, as shown in the findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we have a couple additional public hearings, both related to the fairgrounds. So we opened up a public hearing on this a while back. This is a continuation of that public hearing on design guidelines and schematic plan, the schematic plan for the fairgrounds. We have a staff report update from Emily Bentley, the Fairgrounds Director.
Thanks, thanks for your patience today. Hopefully, we can go through this quickly. So with the planning process completed, the fairgrounds, the design guidelines were, that were discussed today, were developed to identify the function, intent, and character of specific design elements with the goal of ensuring consistent, high-quality design and clear expectations as the fairgrounds are renovated and developed. So concurrent with the design guidelines, we began preliminary design development. The resulting schematic plan further refines the site layout and provides additional detail for site circulation, parking landscaping, building locations, and utilities as a template for final design of individual projects. The schematic design process resulted in several important changes to the site. An ice rink study found there is not sufficient space. An ice rink study found there is not sufficient space in the northwest corner of the grounds to expand the existing facility, and so after examining several options, our final recommendation is to move the new ice facility to the southwest corner of the grounds. To better connect the learning center to the exterior of the fairgrounds and incorporate a butterfly house, the building was moved to the north, to the north to front South Avenue. And then to reduce utility costs, the maintenance building was moved out of the southeast corner of the fairgrounds, where it could more easily be served with planned utility corridors. The benefits of the new site layout and design bring the fairgrounds' landscape, better views through the historic buildings across the north carnival grounds, parking improvements for Glacier Ice Rink, and improvement of local connectivity via the fairway trail. So I'm gonna go through the next few slides quickly, 'cause you've already seen them, but just for folks watching on TV, just to catch them up on what is in the design guidelines. So first, we had the project aesthetic, and it provides the overall guidance for the visual and functional design of the entire grounds. It's expressed through five characteristics that reflect the mission of the fairgrounds: legacy, agriculture, tradition, community, and innovation. And then the individual characteristics will be emphasized in different areas of the projects, but all of the characteristics will be represented throughout the fairgrounds to provide unity and cohesive design. In the design guidelines, the buildings fall into three types: historic, urban-facing, and agricultural. By grouping the buildings, their features reflect their use and provide wayfinding. So the historic building type on the fairgrounds are simplistic, agricultural, and representative of the craftsman style. Preservation of the character-defining features of the historic buildings is a priority and critical to maintaining the legacy and character of the fairgrounds. The agricultural building type will redefine and reestablish the fairgrounds' legacy of agricultural traditions within the community, and we have, here are some examples of windows and doors that are both modern but also sympathetic to the craftsman style, and you can see in the pictures that we use the historic buildings as inspiration in the new agricultural buildings. The urban-facing building group is comprised of new buildings immediately adjacent to the urban environment of Midtown Missoula, serving as the face of the fairgrounds and providing a sense of arrival to the fairgrounds campus. They require heightened sensitivity to the neighborhood. These buildings will enhance the adjacent commercial district and engage with Russell Street and South Avenue to provide safe, efficient, and welcoming multimodal transit onto the fairgrounds. We also went through, the design guidelines also talk about the landscape using our project aesthetic, and I'll just kind of skip through these slides pretty quickly, 'cause I know you've seen it. We have the agricultural landscape, tradition landscape, legacy landscape, community landscape, innovation landscape, and then, of course, the perimeter and the streetscape. And so, some of the edits that you'll see, that since the last time I was here, our recommendation today is to adopt the design guidelines and schematic plan with just a few edits. So in the executive summary and the measles chart, we clarified that commuter trails are open to the public, which is a requirement of receiving the TIF funding from the city to pay for them. We clarified that the agricultural building has parking, specifically ADA parking for, you know, the elections. Clarified that the exhibit and 4-H plazas will have street trails and parking light lighting, and then we clarified that the parking, the playground will have parking nearby. And those were just done by adding dots, and they are consistent with what's in the body of the document. Oops, sorry. And so, under, on page 15, under the project's aesthetic tradition, we added language, we talked about the Native American tradition, and we added language just to clarify that we should be, take care not to appropriate that culture and work with the tribes and some of the local nonprofits on that, and that was just from a comment that we received from one of our staff members, and I think it's a good clarification point. On page-
Just the, the sentence doesn't read very easy. Care should be taken not to appropriate Native American culture, I guess. That just means that we shouldn't be-
Cultural appropriation.
Calling buildings or street names, and what does it mean?
What is cultural appropriation?
What does it mean not to appropriate?
Well, that's a more philosophical question that I wasn't prepared for, but cultural appropriation is what-
So you're not, you're not saying that in no cases should there ever be Native American theme?
No, the design guidelines call for Native, to, the tradition part of the design guidelines specifically call out the interpretation, Native American interpretation, and some of, and some of the patterns. We just wanted to be careful that we are not, this is just language to show that we're taking care not to have someone like me just have the, design that, and actually working with Native Americans to incorporate it appropriately.
Okay, thanks.
And on page 87, the agricultural building type, this is the most substantive change. We added the ability to use tent-like structures, such as Karis Park, in the agricultural building group, over the, we might use them over the grandstands or horse dals, and it would, that will save us a lot of money, and the tent structure at Karis Park was put in 20 years ago, it's in great shape, it's a fraction of the cost of steel, and it looks great. So, we're not certain we're gonna do that, but we wanted to maintain the ability to do that, should we, should we want to. And so, with the planning and design of the Missoula County Fairgrounds included extensive public involvement and stakeholder outreach, as you know, dating back to 2008, and a document labeled Public Involvement Summary is attached to the agenda. You can see how robust that document is and that process was. The design guidelines were developed with input from stakeholder workshops and public comment received at the 2017 Western Montana Fair. The workshop process was designed to elicit community preferences for the future of the fairgrounds, and it included stakeholder, community member, and fairground staff who participated in onsite field trips, discussion, and critical feedback on the desired appearance, function, and collective sense of place designed, desired for the fairgrounds. So the result from that workshop were presented at the 2017 Fair, where fair growers were encouraged to identify their design preferences and treatments, and talk with the design team about their suggestions and concerns. And following the opening of the public hearing that you guys opened, this hearing that we opened in April, we sent out a survey to receive public comment, and of the comments we received on the design guidelines, most were favorable. There were a few themes that stood out, and I'll address those themes with you right now. One was parking, this is one where we hear strongly from both sides, and I just thought I'd go over our methodology quickly, Jeremy Keen is here to answer questions, and we have our calculations with us, if you guys are interested in that too. But our methodology was to minimize the visual impacts of parking, to manage parking for average demand rather than peak demand, peak demand would be the fair, so we can't park out the fair. You know, we don't have 86,000 parking spaces. We consider what parking would look like when there was multiple events going on, and we have continued to encourage alternative transportation, such as transit biking and walking. And we also plan to continue to charge for parking during large events. We designed the lots to accommodate additional uses rather than acting as single-purpose areas, so for example, the flex parking around the livestock center. Some assumptions we made in our calculations, we had to make some assumptions in our calculations, and if patterns change in the future, we will have to update the plan and add more parking, or maybe even less if nobody drives in the future. But, one of the assumptions is that the home arts and the learning center activities typically don't overlap, most of the home arts building are used on the weekends. It assumes larger grandstand events will use ice rink parking, which accommodate up to 4,000 seats, and it, the specific size and use of the exhibit building is not known at this time, it's not programmed, and so additional parking may be required there. And we are continuing to pursue agreements for shared parking with adjacent properties, and if we could come up with a guaranteed revenue stream from, from the adjacent property owners, businesses, we could potentially build a parking structure to accommodate that use. Another theme that came up consistently was renovate versus replace, again, people felt strongly both ways. We had, some people were adamant that we should preserve and renovate everything, and others were clear that they wanted us to scrape and rebuild, rebuild the fairgrounds in its entirety. So on page 22, you can see a chart that shows how we decided to balance these philosophies, by renovating some buildings and replacing others. Careful thought and extensive conversations with stakeholders went into these decisions. Considerations included cost, historic value, practical value, functionality, and safety. And so for buildings with heightened sensitivity and outstanding questions, such as the maintenance building and ice rinks, we conducted additional analysis. And in the case of the ice rinks, we learned that it was best to rebuild instead of major renovations, as I talked about earlier in this presentation. In the case of the maintenance building, while we still don't have any use for the building at the fairgrounds, we did learn that it's possible to move the building, and we are in conversations with other agencies about moving that building to a different location. One other thing to note is that the outdoor rink may be repurposed for livestock or for an exhibit center, and then just for a temporary exhibit center, and then the one caveat was with the public bathrooms, we are exploring the possibility of incorporating them into the new concessions area. We also heard a lot, we also heard some comments about the fairgrounds shouldn't try to be everything to everyone, and I think it's important to address this. The McFAC process that took place, Jerry Marks is here, took that issue very seriously and worked very deliberately to hone in on what the mission of the fairgrounds is and what future uses should be. These decisions were upheld and solidified with the adoption of the 2016 implementation plan, and the, they determined that our mission is to promote agriculture, education, culture, recreation, and community connection, and to reflect the beauty and history of Western Montana. And we've worked very hard to keep this mission at the forefront of the design guidelines process, and make sure that it's used as inspiration in everything we do. And then you've also heard me talk a lot lately about our mantra, which is the fairgrounds being the physical space that embodies the diversity of Missoula County itself, connecting our urban vibrancy with our rural heritage, Midtown with the neighborhoods, and tradition with innovations. And I truly believe that these design guidelines have found a way to harmonize those concepts, so the fairgrounds can continue to be a bridge for our community. The recommendation before you today is to close the public hearing and adopt the fairgrounds' design guidelines dated May 24th, 2018, and schematic plan, which updates and supersedes the implementation plan.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there any public comment on adopting the design guidelines and updated schematic plan? Come on up. Okay, as tantalizing as the, oh, we do have a taker, okay.
If I need a mic, or is this-
It looks like it's on.
Is this working? Okay.
It's great.
Eric Gabster, I'm a resident of Midtown, a member of the Midtown Association Board, and also one of the members of the Missoula County Fairground Advisory Committee in its early years. The commission knows my position on these, these issues, and Commissioner Curtis has been listening to my voice on this for about eight years. It feels this agenda item and the next one feel like the, the end of a long road and the beginning of a great adventure, and I would urge, from all of those viewpoints that I bring forward in being here today, that you do vote for these plans, because it reflects, as you know, a tremendous amount of effort among many people. That said, there are no perfect answers, I think we all understand that, and 47 acres, for anyone who's familiar with fairgrounds, is a very, very small space for county fairgrounds. So to try to do this is a remarkably difficult process, and not everyone's needs are gonna be satisfied. That said, it won't be very long before 60,000 cars a day, that the Travel Brooks will be able to look across a million-dollar view shed into the middle of the fairgrounds, across the historic carnival lawn, and, and look at the traditional buildings, including both the commercial and the culinary building, among others, that have millions of dollars of redevelopment being put in them to protect them. The other developments on the fairgrounds are things that, from the early days, we had talked about and really hoped for in the development of, the work of the Cooperative Extension Service, and a rebuilding of the rodeo and grandstands, and making ice, which brings millions of dollars to the local community, is an economic impact on an annual basis, the kind of facility that can really amplify that impact. Further, speaking to the rough stock and livestock possibilities, it's difficult sometimes on those plans to understand the scope and the scale of that livestock arena that is designed. It is, I don't, maybe like 10 football fields in size, and will be able to host livestock and rough stock and equestrian events year-round, which is really a phenomenal advantage, and will be able to bring back some of the great historic practices of cattle auctions and some of the other things that used to happen in Missoula and just can't anymore, because there's no facility to do it. So, as a, as a resident, I look forward to be able to visit a space with 19 acres of open space, to be able to enjoy a fair that is really world-class, and will bring in people from states around Missoula, and as a member of the Midtown Association, certainly happy to see the amount of commerce that this is going to bring to, to Midtown and all of Missoula. So, on this and the next item, which the Midtown Board has voted its assent for, we certainly hope you vote yes on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Additional public comment? Mr. Marks?
Jerry Marks, Service Department Head for the Extension Office in Wee District. And I have to say, I've been involved in the planning of this fairgrounds for decades. This is exciting, I'm glad we're moving forward, and I think it'll bring much excitement to Missoula as we've reached out to a changing population. I fully support this design guidelines and plan.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion or questions from the commission?
I would move that we adopt the fairgrounds' design guidelines dated May 24th, so that includes the amendments then, right, Emily? And the schematic plan, which updates and supersedes the implementation plan.
I'll second that, and thank you for all your hard work, this has been a long process, and Jerry, it's been even a longer process than Eric, and, so this is very exciting, and I think, I think it's turned out really well, so, thanks.
Thanks. I'll just say, yeah, thanks everyone, now the mic's really hot. Thanks everyone who participated in this process to develop the schematic guideline, design guidelines, and the design guidelines and schematic. I guess, to be honest, one thing that does still pain me is the loss of the WPA building, maintenance building, and that we were not able to figure out a way to adaptively reuse it onsite, and incrementally, it probably will have an impact on whether the National Register District is able to stay a district in the future. But that is unfortunate or unfortunate, that is not what's before us today, since the WPA building was not included in the 2016 adopted plan. I will say, I will continue to be vigilant, to do my best to find a possible recipient of that building, and someone who would adopt it, and I would certainly urge the commission to consider investing and moving that building, at least up to the amount that we would otherwise spend on deconstructing it, for the sake of, at least even if not onsite, offsite, keeping the theme of the Works Progress Administration alive in Missoula County. So we've had a motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Our next item is to open a public hearing on adopting a resolution relating to Missoula County Fairgrounds District, creating the district for the purpose of undertaking, operating, maintaining improvements to the Missoula County Fairgrounds, and financing the capital through the issuance of special district bonds. Emily?
I prepared a brief presentation about the Fairgrounds Special District, and then Courtney Ellis, Dan Simmons, our bond counsel from Dorsey Whitney, will follow me with some more information on why we're recommending this financing tool over others, and Chris is also here to help answer questions if you, if you have them. So we're here today to discuss and hopefully approve utilization of a tool that's provided for in state law, which allows the fairgrounds to borrow money against existing tax revenue in order to implement capital improvements. This tool is called a special district, and we've created this handy diagram to explain that process. In the FY 1718 budget, the county commission approved three additional mills for the fairgrounds with the intent-
with the intent to combine them with an existing and ongoing one-half mill allocated for the Weed District and existing and ongoing one-half mill allocated for the county extension office, for a total of four mills to use annually to implement Phase 1 of the master plan. This ongoing millage shows up on property tax, showed up on Property Tax Owners Bill last fall. Since these mills are already on the tax bills of Missoula County residents, no additional tax increase is associated with creation of a fairgrounds special district at this time. And on March 22nd of this year, following an initial public hearing, the Board of County Commissioners passed a resolution of intent to create the special district. That resolution declared that, it was the intent of the county commission, where am I? That resolution declared that it was the intent of the Board of County Commissioners to create a fairgrounds special district to finance implementation of the master plan using the revenue produced from the levy of the mills that I just described. Following adoption of that resolution, the county published and mailed notice initiating a 60-day protest period during which properties within the special district, in this case the fairgrounds, could formally protest. The 60-day period has ended, and we are now holding a public hearing, after which the county may proceed to create a special district. The next step will be to work with lenders to secure financing mechanism, such as a state revolving loan fund, or private, which we're using for the utilities, or privately placed loans. And then, finally, after years of careful planning, we'll start to see changes on the fairgrounds. And I just want to be crystal clear for those in the audience, this tool does not allow the county to increase mills over the mill cap in state law. Rather, in this special district, the fairgrounds will continue to be subject to the millage authority and restrictions normally granted to the county commissioners. And that millage authority and the associated restrictions will not change by the creation of this district. So be crystal clear on that. So, you know, if we had the money, why do we want to finance? Well, at this time, because construction costs are inflating faster than interest rates are rising, therefore, rather than spend the mills as cash one year at a time, it's most cost-effective to borrow or finance redevelopment and construct as much as possible as quickly as possible. Having access to this capital also ensures that redevelopment uses the most efficient methods to build, allowing construction bids to capture an economy of scale. So, you ask, why can't we just go to the bank and borrow the money like a homeowner or a business would? Well, we can't because Montana state law says that counties must use one of a few tools provided for in state law to finance projects. And the special district is one of those tools, and it's specifically identified in state laws as one that fairs can use. And then Courtney, Courtney will talk more about this in a moment. So from a county budgeting perspective, this is the most transparent tool to use because the special district will allow a citizen to look at one special district in the budget, see the amount being assessed, and see the budgeted amounts for each project, and see the direct relation between the assessments and debt service lines over an extended period of time. Whereas in other budgets, the only thing that remains from year to year would be the debt service amount, which would likely just show as a transfer out. So to reiterate, a special district does not allow the commissioners to raise taxes higher than is granted under the mill cap. This is not a way to circumvent that law. Phase 1, we are planning to renovate the commercial building, culinary building, fair office, floriculture building, and home arts building. We will also build new concessions, a new learning center for the county extension in Weed District, and a new maintenance shop. Here are some cost estimates. You can see that we don't plan on paying for all of Phase 1 using the special district, the mills, in the special district right now. We're looking at other funding sources and partners such as MRA, and trying to stretch our dollars as much as possible. So the timeline is here, we're at the last thing on our timeline, there's, and Courtney will, can answer questions about the next steps. But we have gone through all of the steps that are necessary in state law, including public notice and mailing the, the notice. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Courtney, who'll give a quick brief, and then, if you guys have any questions, I would, you can direct them.
Good afternoon. As Emily said, I'm Courtney Ellis. I'm an attorney with Dorsey and Whitney, and we act as bond counsel for the county. And I apologize, Emily covered some of this, but, some of this, I just feel like I want to make sure everyone is very clear about. So, as a brief overview of the way that the special district will work, first, the county would create the fairgrounds special district, which would be by that resolution today, with boundaries coterminous with the fairgrounds' boundaries. And this means that the county is the only owner of property within the special district. The county can then proceed to issue bonds and use the bond proceeds to pay costs of the redevelopment of the fairgrounds. And the special district bonds that the county would issue are payable from the assessments that the county levies against the fairgrounds, its own property. And the source of revenue the county would use to pay those assessments is the three mills that the county currently levies countywide. From a letter to the editor in today's Missoulian and a few other comments I've heard, I understand that people are concerned that the special district either increases the county's taxing authority or allows the county to assess all property owners in the county without allowing taxpayers to protest. I agree that those would be really worrisome. However, creating the fairgrounds special district does not do either of those things. The county, like all local governments in Montana, is subject to a fairly stringent statutory cap on the number of mills it can levy in any year. The county has budgetary discretion to levy mills up to the statutory mill cap. If it wants to levy mills above the mill cap for any reason other than paying legal judgments, that would need to go to a vote. The special district does not authorize the county to levy mills above the statutory mill cap. In addition, the fairgrounds special district that's proposed here is not like the special districts that the city of Missoula has created for parks and roads. Those districts are citywide, so all properties in the city are assessed for the costs of those districts. As the letter to the editor points out, in the citywide special districts, the assessments may go up over time, and those assessments are not taxes subject to the statutory mill cap. So, for example, if the county had created this as a countywide special district, I think that those concerns would be very valid legitimate concerns. Here, the only property in the fairgrounds special district belongs to the county. The county can only assess itself for the costs of the fairgrounds special district, and the only taxpayer money that the county can access to pay the costs of the special district comes from the mills that the county can levy under the existing statutory mill cap. So, creating the special district does not authorize the county to access any additional taxpayer funds, either through taxes or through assessments, other than by levying mills under the statutory cap. So as Emily explained, construction prices are rising faster than interest rates. So after determining to levy the three mills under the statutory cap, the county wanted to leverage the revenue from those mills, which were, again, levied under the cap, so that the county and the taxpayers can get as much construction value as possible out of each dollar. The two principal ways that we considered leveraging the mills, because, again, counties can only, counties like other local governments can only incur debt in very specific statutorily authorized manners. So the two principal ways that we considered as an initial matter were either creating a rural special improvement district, or an RSID, or creating the special district. An RSID would function in largely the same manner as this special district. The county would create the RSID with boundaries coterminous with the fairgrounds' boundaries, issue the RSID bonds, and use the proceeds to pay for the improvements, and then those bonds would be payable from the assessments that the county levies against the fairgrounds. And the revenue the county would use to pay the assessments would come from the three mills. So it's essentially an identical structure. The main differences between the RSID and the special district, and the reason that we thought that the special district was a good choice here, are that first, to be marketable as a general matter, RSID bonds would presumably need to be secured by the county's RSID revolving fund, which would require a deposit to the county's RSID revolving fund from bond proceeds of 5% of the principal amount of the bond proceeds. Second, because the fairgrounds is located within city limits, the city of Missoula would need to participate in the RSID creation process. So neither of these are insurmountable obstacles by any means. They just make the process lengthier, and I think more importantly, more costly and less efficient. It's just a less efficient means of financing these same improvements and trying to leverage these same dollars. Like an RSID, the special district is not a separate political body, nor does the special district authorize the county to access any taxpayer funds other than by levying mills under the statutory cap. The special district is purely a means of leveraging the three mills that are currently being levied to provide for the most cost-effective financing of fairgrounds improvements. So please let me know if you have questions.
Thank you. That was super helpful. Any questions yet? Any public comment on forming the special district? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Questions or discussion by the commission? Motion?
Thank you, Courtney. That was super helpful, and Emily as well. Your presentations were very clear, and if anyone in the public does continue to have any questions about the financing mechanisms, we would be happy to discuss it with you. But, feeling that I fully understand it, and I think that it is the most cost-effective and efficient manner to go about leveraging our three mills, I move that we approve the resolution relating to Missoula County Fairgrounds District, creating the district for the purpose of undertaking, operating, and maintaining improvements to the Missoula County fairgrounds, and financing the capital costs thereof and incidental thereto through the issuance of special district bonds.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we've got a special district. I see someone for the county attorney's office here. This is just recreational attendance?
Recreation.
Okay, excellent. So is there any other business to come before the commission this afternoon? Okay, seeing none, we'll be in recess.